Have a prototype pretty much ready to go and they anticipate doing that testing in the first or second quarter. Of next year, um, that's up to the Idaho National Engineering Laboratory. They are the ones, that's where it will take place. Um, but they do have that allotment, so that, that's a big deal. We're working on trying to get uh private money, uh public money, some state money. And that's the app, uh, the grant application that Goose is working on right now.
So the facility build out, um, would, we'd like to start running infrastructure later this year, which is why we're submitting the grant now. To that site and then pending their successful. Uh, testing at Idaho National Labs Q one or Q two of next year, we'd like to um. Begin site preparations that it's built ready for them. Their plans at the moment. Are to build approximately a two hundred, two hundred and fifty million dollar facility on that site using primarily local contractors. Um, that build out will take place over about eighteen months or so after they uh, after the site is ready for them. Um, day one, they'll have, they project to have about seventy-five jobs here locally. And that will increase over time as they reach manufacturer, peak manufacturing capacity. Around years four or five, um, peaking at about two hundred and fifty jobs locally, all of which are supported through um, above.
Yeah.
Average wages.
So the, the company has the funds available to uh actual, actually build the building. Uh, they have been very successful in, in raising money to date. Uh, I think. The previous number that was out there was in the hundred and thirty-five million range, but when we met with them last week. Uh, there were some, some other investors that had desired to come in on it, so they allowed them to and they're in the. In the upper one hundreds, uh, near two hundred million that they've have committed to them. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that's based on a successful test at the engineering lab in Idaho. So this is an infrastructure, this will be an infrastructure ask when we make it.
All right, I gotta, I do have a question. This is one of the things and, and I understand it, but so that. Our general public has it on the record and so they can understand it. Explain why and how this is gonna be beneficial. By adding that many positions and that many jobs to our community.
Why is it beneficial to add high paying jobs?
Yep. Like I said, I, you don't have to, you don't have to convince me, but a lot of our general public don't understand. You know, just exactly where that, how that's going to benefit, not only in the Trona County or Barnum, but the whole state of Wyoming.
Well, in, increased economic activity is kind of the rising tide raises all boats. So I, uh, I guess I'm a little bit taken aback from that question, but it's a.
I've actually had.
I guess fair, fair enough.
Yeah, I. That's basically what it amounts to. I, they need to hear it from somebody other than myself.
They're also looking to support their local workforce through training at our local colleges. Um, my background was chemical engineering and I know if there was a facility like this, when I graduated, it would have been. Definitely near the top of my list for, for working here. So hopefully we're also. Uh, retaining our young talent through these advanced manufacturing opportunities.
If they get to the point where they can build uh, two of these a month and they're thirty million dollars a piece, there's. They already have their first year's worth of production uh, is already spoken for. So. These would be long-term, high-paying, very stable uh, jobs with. You know, which would attract the, the best and brightest that's, and give our local uh, young people. An opportunity to move up and move into those. So I, from my standpoint. That's the higher paying jobs you have in your area, the better off you are.
So.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out how to ask this question. I do have people who. Who are concerned because it's a radioactive issue. And how close it will be to houses and what dangers do we, do they have to be aware of if any? Um, how it might affect somebody, if there's some sort of disaster. Lawyer always wonder, are they, are they bonded? Do they have the proper insurance if they do damage to somebody, that kind of thing? So could you address any of those?
So I can't speak specifically for them on that, but I can tell you that uh. The Department of Energy has standards for background radiation that, that they can produce at their, each one of their facilities. Each one of the actual units produces a very, very low amount. In fact. When they, when they put them on site, they normally have a, just a prefab concrete bunker. That the, the uh, reactor end sits in and. Think they said you, you would, you couldn't tell the difference between what we normally get from sunshine and that. Uh, within a hundred feet of it. It's, I mean, this is a very, very low amount of radioactive material in each one. And, and highly uh insulated. So.
Do they have these in other areas of the country?
This is, this is uh, it's not new technology, but it's a new, a new form and a new way of doing it. Uh, this is, they're building micro reactors. And, and so I, I guess first off, you understand that they're building these units and then they're shipped to other places. To provide power. So there, there won't be a, a bunch of reactors sitting up here running. That uh, they, those go to other, other areas like remote look, say for instance, a remote military site. Could use one. Uh, each one produces about uh, one megawatt, which is typically that's. Like rule of thumb, that'll run a thousand households. So.
Who brought them to Casper? How'd they get to Casper, Wyoming?
How did they find this area?
Yeah.
Uh, as I, as I understand it, we weren't really on the, the radar. They had. Looked at a place in northern Colorado and Cheyenne and Gillette and then Tennessee. I think. Um, anyway, they were visiting, they were going between Cheyenne and uh, Gillette. And stopped through here and uh, started talking to some people and that's kind of how it, it started. Yeah.
Who owns the real estate that they want to put this on currently?
Uh, a private individual.
Can you tell us who that is?
Robert, who's sitting back there?
I didn't, I didn't see who raised their hand.
Robert Mc-Murray.
I know Robert, he's a nice guy.
Robert, you said that they had, they've already got thirty units spoken for?
They have what?
You said they have about thirty units already spoken for?
Uh, twenty-five of the thirty that they anticipate building in the, are spoken for.
And I'm, and I don't want to put you on the spot on this, but um. My understanding from talking to the folks from Radiant, that the majority of those, they're looking at, at uh, the military. Is that, is that correct in your understanding?
I think the majority of them.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
With the NRC, part of that. That agreement, that if, if it's actually a military use, they can actually store. That spent material, from my understanding. If it's something that they own. Did you know anything about that?
I don't.
Okay, all right. Well, then I'm not gonna delve into it.
I, I know that the, the, the storage that has been designed and tested. First off, this, the, the actual machine that they're building is, is new, but the technology is from the forties. You know, that, that's just the way that it is. The cooling sources are different, the, the energy generation is different, but. They're not recreating the wheel on, on that aspect and. Something in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand truckloads of nuclear material have been produced since that time. And transported to storage locations in a safe manner with no incidents. So I, I understand when you think of a three mile island or a. You know, the Japanese island that had the, the problem. That can raise concern from the public, but these are not that. These are, these are very small uh. Small facilities compared to those.
Little different. I mean, lot different.
A lot.
What you're storing, how you're storing it.
Yeah.
We don't have earthquakes, we don't have tidal waves.
Well, and, and even if we did, the, the storage vessels are, are built to withstand that, so.
So, but yeah, there's, there, there's a lot of information out there that um. I don't, I don't believe that the public is fully aware of all the information. That's one thing that uh, that I would like to see. A little bit more informative sessions go on, so that they can actually answer some of these questions and, and make sure that. They do understand.
Yeah, I, I also think there's a misconception that this uses an enormous amount of water, which it, it doesn't.
Yeah, so.
When will we have somebody from Radiant here that can explain this?
He just walked in.
Oh, he's gonna.
So. Come on up, Matt. We got some questions for you. We'll put you on the hot seat right off the bat, so didn't get a chance to get warmed up.
I, I appreciate it. I was just with the rep, House Representative up the area, so.
So.
I feel ready to go.
Matt, um, without divulging any s- secret information. The majority of, of these units that you're looking at to start with are, are going to the military. Is that correct?
That's our intent. Now the military has to purchase them.
Yeah, right. But I mean, that, that's the goal. So.
Yes.
Are, are you aware of the NRC's regulatory? Um, regulations that allow the military to store their own uh, spent fuels?
I know the military has jurisdiction over how to manage their own reactors, yes.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking if they actually own these, if they're purchasing them, that they could actually store that spent fuel on their. Location eventually instead of having it all. I, I'm asking.
Yeah, it's so, from a logistics perspective, we will have to bring it back. To our factory site, no matter what, to do the refueling process.
Sure.
And at that point, Radiant is responsible for the entire nuclear lifecycle, and so we will have. The ability to manage the spent fuel at our factory location. Now, for the military use case, if there is specific reason that they want to manage the spent fuel at the property. We will have gone from a military base, back to the factory, refueled, put it in a spent fuel canister, instead of putting it. On the already qualified site at our factory, we will then ship it again.
Right.
To the military site to store there, but um, it is a commercial and military unit, so. Um, we will need the ability to store the entire nuclear lifecycle regardless.
Okay.
At this point, the military involved in it, are they?
So Radiant was just down, it's just public news, you can look online, but last week we were down selected as part of the. Defense Innovation Units, um, micro nuclear reactor. Project to eventually have one of our, one or multiple of our units cited at a, at a military location, so. Um, there's a lot of steps involved before we actually cite, but the, we are having active conversations and are part of. The request for proposal process to eventually cite one of our reactors at a, at a military location.
What do you do to protect the public should something occur that would be damaging to them? Are you insured or anything like that?
Uh, let me know if this answers your question. So through all of our licenses that we, we have to receive to manufacture and operate these reactors. As a part of it, we have to show financial assurance that we will be able to manage these reactors in. Any scenario, whether or not that's a disaster scenario or normal operations.
Can you tell me what that means in terms of nu- a number?
Yeah, I need to look at, I don't know if there's an exact number. There's a calculation along the lines of. How to determine what the dollar figure will be Radiant has put up to get a spent fuel license as an example. But then on top of that, there's additional assurances from the Department of Energy. That in the event Radiant goes bankrupt or there's something else that, that occurs, that they take full responsibility of. The, the entire spent fuel management lifecycle at that point. Um, so again, Radiant has no interest in going that route. Um, but if we're talking about a worst case scenario, there are assurances in place, financial protections. That Radiant has to put in place, but then also additional federal assurances to make sure that. This uh, spent fuel as an example is, is managed appropriately.
There's, there's several people in here that I know are concerned citizens, and so. Um. What would you tell concerned citizens that really don't want radio, radioactive materials in their neighborhood or? Cause they're worried that they're dangerous and that somebody might abandon them and it could be like the. The wind, the wind turbines and the solar power that they walk away from. Could you address that just generally?
Yep, um, if you're okay with me walking through. A bit how Radiant's looking to set up our manufacturing operations, I think that, that answers.
Like the more information you can provide our public.
Yeah.
Uh, the better it'll be for all of us.
So. Our, our goal is to have the commercial factories set up to build these reactors by twenty twenty-eight. That's assuming that all of our licenses are in place and that we have both the Nuclear Regulatory Commission as well as the local Wyoming agency sign off. Say, yes, you can go ahead and manufacture these um, based off of our designs and all of the operating procedures we have to submit um, as part of our plans. Prior to the vast, vast majority of construction activities occurring. Uh, ninety-five percent of the company, Radiant, is focused on. The final build and eventual fueling of our prototype. And so. That fueling of the prototype is supposed to take place in the first half of twenty twenty-six at the Idaho National Lab. And so there will be a working nuclear reactor that Radiant has built. Prove out, again, we have all the designs and it's all what we're building. We will have already shown that we are able to do what we're looking to accomplish. So when it comes to the nuclear lifecycle, let's say twenty twenty-eight, everything's going great. We built the first reactor, military customer. We've had a lot of conversations with folks in uh, in Alaska, for example, remote communities that are really interested in these types of reactors, wherever it goes. Uh, it will run for five years of continuous power before it needs to be refueled. So. In a best case scenario, twenty thirty-three is when we'll have to ship it back to the react, uh, to the factory, refuel it. And then we will use the spent fuel procedures that are already out there. Um, there are many, many states that already have operating reactors. That manage spent fuel. It's a very standardized process. We will follow the same process. Some of the differences, um. Some, some of the, some of the differences, our reactor is one megawatt. The reactors around the US are gigawatt, which is a thousand megawatts, or one one thousandth the size. So it's significantly less fuel than we'll have to have in a dry cask. We're, we're actually planning on having. Multiple fuel cores fit in one single dry cask. And we also use a different fuel form. So we use what's, what's called trisulfene. It's an advanced type of nuclear fuel. That has extra protections involved as well, just to make the entire process of getting it into a spent fuel canister that much more. Uh, safe and straightforward. And so when it comes to the safety of it and having it in backyard. You can hug one of these spent fuel canisters and it's gonna be the equivalent of background radiation. There's radiation that comes from the sun as an example, and so it is very, very safe and there's been. Um, there's a lot of testing that goes into all the different scenarios of what could happen to these containers. I can give examples of it on the road. Um, we have to show that one of our reactors could withstand a hundred and twenty-six mile per hour driving accident. If it's hit by a train, you have to be able to show that it's gonna withstand. Uh, you could even go online and see some of these spent fuel canisters that are hit by a train and then lit on fire. And then you have to show that in that scenario, it's also safe. So uh, the nuclear industry in general is set is. There's a very, very high bar that you have to be able to show you can meet to even be able to have any manufacturing procedure happen.
I'm familiar with those videos, but can you tell people where to go and look for those?
I can get you a link, yeah.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that and if we can do that, because that's something that if people see just exactly. How safe those casts are in the new development. Uh, they're a lot different than the ones that, that have been around for a long time. That are, that people are saying they're leaking and things like that. Well, the technology has changed a lot. And so is the scientific, science behind it. And so I think that would be something that would. Definitely be beneficial to ease people's mind as far as what, just how safe they really are. So I would appreciate that information.
That's true.
Commissioner Allen?
Gotta get a wedge in here somewhere.
Wedge yourself right on.
Exactly. So you're talking about the cast and everything, the construction, uh, without going into. Structural engineering detail or, or any security portions of it. Can you describe the dry cast, how they're constructed?
Uh, yes, I can. Um, and I'll, I'll. Yeah, I was gonna say what level of detail.
Yeah.
So there are multiple. Spent fuel casts that are approved by Nuclear Regulatory Commission. I'll, I'll give an example, one that it's likely we'll use, so. First, there's a steel canister that it goes in and it's surrounded by additional, like you, you can call it a concrete bunker. I guess, um, they're typically ten foot wide, fifteen foot high, um, so a significant structure. But it's built in a way to not just protect from any radiation from the spent fuel, but again, we have to show that in a disaster scenario. Earthquake, artillery shell, it doesn't matter what scenario, that it will be protected.
So most of the voids are filled?
Yes.
Enter.
Um, there is a gap. The steel canister has, uh, there's no void between the steel canister and the, and the additional concrete. But there's some void in the actual steel canister.
Um, you said you, these are designed for basically the gigawatt reactors, not your fuel.
Correct.
Approximately how many, how much do you think you'd be, you'll be able to sit into swag?
That's a good question. Um, so how, we will have. A couple hundred kilograms of fuel in each one of our reactors. So that's actually quite small when you think about one megawatt, that's enough. Power for a thousand homes for five years, continuous power. Um, that being said, we're still figuring out the exact extraction method. So we don't have spent fuel rods, which is what all the mega reactors use today. We have these small compacts that are in the graphite core, so if we're able to extract the graphite compacts only. There's a world where we fit dozens of our reactor cores in one spent fuel canister now. If for whatever reason, it's simpler and more efficient to just extract. The entire graphite core out, then at that point, we're only gonna fit, let's say, three, four or five cores in one of these spent fuel canisters, so. Uh, we want to minimize this footprint as much as possible, but we will do it in a safe, controlled manner that, that has been approved. And then. Again, the earliest that we would have these spent fuel canisters is twenty thirty-three, like realistically, it's somewhere in the mid twenty thirties and so if there's. If we have enough interest, that's enough time to go and have a specific spent fuel canister for our use case developed, but we're gonna. Look to see what makes the most sense over the coming years.
Right, and after, after, after the time period collapses and it has to come back for refueling. It's because the radiation isn't quite as uh, intense as, as when you put them in, correct, or, or?
It's actually the opposite. Um, so.
Explain that process.
Yeah, so new, a new reactor is being built. If we wanted to, um. I will pull it out of my pocket. I don't know if everyone will be able to see it, but when we're talking about the fuel. We're talking about something that you can hold in your hand and we, when you were actually, this is a plastic sample. But you could actually fuel the new reactor by hand if you wanted to. We could have it be a manual operation. Putting each one of these into the graphite core. Um, now, once you've been running the reactor for five years at whatever customer site. It's now irradiated fuel, and so that's when you have to control the radiation. All of the shielding inside of our reactor container is all meant so that we can maintain. Department of Transportation compliance, so that we can ship it via route back to the factory. And so there's a lot of shielding involved in that. When we open it back up at the factory, there is radiation that you have to continue to control, so that likely will be. An automated operation at that point for the refueling, taking out the used core. Putting it into a spent fuel canister, putting in a new core. Um, but again, the new, the, the, the radiation that you're controlling. Is really on the, on the backend when you're putting into the spent fuel canister.
What, what type of uh, what type of radiation is it giving off? Is it?
Alpha, beta, gamma. Um, so all types. And so again, like when, when we're talking about shielding. Lead's really good at gamma shielding. Um, just blunt force, stop whatever's in its track, uh. Alpha and beta, um, we use what's called borated polyethylene, so boron's a very good way to absorb that type of. Radiation, so it's plastic that's injected with boron that's able to absorb that type of radiation. So it's, it's all three types that you described.
Right, and that's in the cat, that's in the cast as well.
Yeah, so the steel canister plus like, I believe, I, I will also raise my hand and say I'm, I'm not a nuclear engineer. So I apologize if I get this. I, I think the oper, I think the uh. Concrete's very good at gamma, I might have that wrong, but again, like, concrete has a lot of the same qualities as water, like water is what is used in the mega reactors. And so that's why there's concrete shielding in the spent fuel. And again, when we're at a customer site, we add additional concrete at the customer site too. That's the only construction activities. We slot our reactor inside of a concrete bunker there as well and it's. Again, the whole point is make sure that that customer site is only seeing background radiation, so no different than if the reactor wasn't there.
Now earlier you'd stated that uh, other states allow it. How many other states allow approximately?
I'm gonna say thirty-seven. I might have that off by one or two. It's close. Thirty-seven states. And I, basically anywhere where there's a nuclear reactor. Everywhere where there's a nuclear reactor, they have to manage the uh, entire. Nuclear lifecycle.
And that, in the end, I mean, the company's responsible, but who overall is. Very far and overreaching umbrella, who's responsible for any spent?
Department of Energy has final jurisdiction, jurisdiction over the eventual permanent repository for spent fuel.
And, and you said uh, this material is tra- travels our interstates daily generally or?
There have been, there have been thousands of spent fuel shipments that have gone through Wyoming over the last fifty years, so. Not daily, maybe not even weekly, but it is, it is a well traversed uh, route. Through the city to, or sorry, through the state to get to its ultimate destination, which is uh, most of that spent fuel is stored at the Idaho National Lab. And that, that is part of the uh, that, that is part of the nuclear submarine program.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I have a, I have a couple, three questions. First one is two parts. Tell us what the uh, benefits are to the people of the Trona County, Wyoming to do this and what the downside is.
Yeah, Commissioner Lay, the, the upside, so. Wyoming is very familiar with energy industries as a whole. Um. I personally think that nuclear is a really good fit to expand upon the energy industries in Wyoming. Uh, Terra Power is. An example of another announced project, and so if I'm thinking about the factory operation that Radiant wants to set up. Uh, we don't use any water in our reactor, so uh, and very little water in any of our manufacturing procedures, so. It's a low water industrial manufacturing company, basically that wants to come here and we're expecting seventy jobs. Day one. Two thirds of those jobs are gonna be assemblers, welders, technicians. Um, the other third is business operations, things like that. And as we scale, we're hopeful that we can get up to fifty reactors a year. That's the market that we see. Um, and so the vast, vast majority of jobs we're looking to fill are already available in the Trona County market. Um, I've seen multiple fabrication companies here and if anything, Radiant's operation looks small. So you guys are really good at building big, heavy stuff, so that's a bigger, bigger reason why we want to be here. So manufacturing jobs and. When Radiant turns on our prototype next year, it'll be the first nuclear reactor, it's the first new design of a nuclear reactor to have been turned on in fifty years. Big deal for the nuclear industry, but my understanding is that the nuclear industry, uh, Wyoming's actively trying to attract. The nuclear industry as well, so if you can show a successful candidate that's making a ton of progress in this area, I, I see. Radiant being a catalyst for additional nuclear companies looking to cite and maybe not in the direct Neptuna County area, but in Wyoming as a. As a whole. Um, so if I were to talk through the downsides. Ra- Radiant is very focused on prototype development right now and again. Ra- Radiant is very focused on prototype development right now. And again, I, I wouldn't be at the company if I didn't think we were gonna be successful through, through prototype development. A downside is we're having all these conversations and something happens and we don't turn on the reactor, the reactor doesn't. Work the way that we intend. So what, what happens there? At that point, we've had all these discussions. Um, I have been spending a lot of time in Wyoming that feels a little silly at that point, maybe. Um, I love Wyoming. I've really enjoyed it here, but, um, I have two, I have small kids at home. My, my wife will ask me a lot of questions. Um, but at that point, we, Radiant probably is no longer around. It looks very, very different. But what, what is the downside to Nitro County? We haven't built the factory. We're turning on the reactor in the first half of next year. We have a lot of licensing and design that we have to do before then. Um, the, the, the downside is that you don't get this manufacturing facility that we're promising and, and intending to build. So. Um, I see that as fairly small downside. Um, we're, we're trying to attract the nuclear industry in Wyoming, and. This is a major step, but all the investment, the vast, vast majority of investment happens after we turn on the reactor.
So are there any county commissioners involved in this project at all?
I've had multiple count, uh, conversations with Nitro County Commissioners. Um, so I, if you want to clarify further, but. Radiant's intention has been to make it clear what we'd like to. Complete in Nitro County and specifically we're looking just outside the borders of Bar Nun. Um, and so. Uh, we, we have done our best to have conversations with a wide variety of folks in the area to help them understand what we're trying to accomplish.
And then finally, I'm not a nuclear engineer either. So when do we get to see a nuclear engineer come in here and explain this to us?
So we, we did have, we had a town hall, we had a town hall in Bar Nun, three weeks ago, um, approximately. And we had. Uh, we had two nuclear engineers at that town hall and.
I'm talking about here in one of these meetings.
Oh, whenever you want. I can, I can stop there. But we, we've brought, we brought nuclear engineers in to. Uh, help the local community understand the, the safety basis and everything that goes into building one of these reactors. And more than happy to have. A nuclear engineer here. Uh, I do my best, but I am not.
So has any state or county turned you down?
No, we, we, we actively did not, uh, look at a handful of states because they weren't attractive for a variety of reasons, but. All the states we looked at were either friendly to nuclear or friendly to business. Um, we had no state actively turn us down. Um. We had early conversations with Nevada and now, um, Yucca Mountain's been a, an interesting use case over the last couple decades. And so. They had the most major concerns around spent fuel, just given their history. And so if you. If you want to point to them is all they want, they, they were very adamant around the spent fuel. But again, that was. I think more based off of the history of what's gone on in Nevada than anything else. Um, we looked at nine other states and no other state turned us down. And. I'd say there's multiple states that are actively looking to pursue us to this day.
Thank you. I, I, uh, lived in Nevada when I was a little kid. And they told us, I think I was in the fourth grade, and they said, if a big black cloud comes over, everybody's got to get under their desk. Cause they were exploding atomic bombs about two hundred and seventy miles from Ely, Nevada, where we lived. And, uh, I've run into a couple of those guys who are still alive. They're all still afraid of nuclear. Because of having to get under our desks two or three times. So it's a scary thing for people. And that's why I want to make sure that our. County residents are fully informed on this so that they can tell me what their viewpoints are because. I'm an elected official, got people in the county, voted me in, and I listen to them very carefully. Thank you.
Commissioner Mel?
Yeah, uh, talking about your units and say, some people have been concerned about, uh, if there is a release of the coolant. Can you describe what coolant you're using and how that coolant differs from, say, water or other releases that occur?
Commissioner, yeah, we will, we are building a, what's called a high temperature gas reactor. Now, the reactors around the US today. Are light water reactors and they are by a large body of water and water does a lot of good things for reactors. It. Cools them down. There's a lot of other applications. Um, but you have to have a very controlled. Process when you use water, because water does become very radioactive. Um, we are looking to deploy these units in remote environments. And so we have selected the high temperature gas reactor, uh, and we use helium as our coolant. And so again, as part of our safety case, we have to show basically in any atmosphere that we will be able to have, be able to control and manage a, a safe reactor. And so. In the event that we lose our coolant, so there's a leak, natural disaster, artillery shell, you, you pick, you pick what you want. Helium is stable, does not become radioactive. So there's, uh, no harm to the environment there. Now, we lose our coolant. Reactors run hot. So we have to show a way to be able to maintain or reduce temperature over time. In the event of a loss of coolant, there are active features in the reactors today that throw more water at the reactor to cool them down. These reactors are a thousand times bigger than our reactor. So we've done a lot of design and analysis and. Physical demonstrations, we built a version of this reactor using electro heaters to show. In the event of a loss of coolant, we open up a ventilation system and. Natural air convection over time brings the reactor down to ambient temperature. So there's. No concern for meltdown or anything at our scale. It's not, it's not possible.
So you're not relying on a subsystem coolant?
It is all passively cooled. No relying on any other subsystems.
Um, another question for you real quick. You may not know this. I, I don't know if anybody does, but maybe we can find out or something like that. I'd be curious to know how many, uh. How many licenses are out there for the storage or use from the NRC in just Nitro County? Cause I know of at least a handful myself, maybe seen them. So, you know, it's. I'm just kind of curious if, if this isn't like a new license other than the building and temporary storage, right?
Correct. Um, and actually, so. We have to get four to five different licenses through Nuclear Regulatory Regulation. Regulation, there's. A materials license to be able to handle nuclear fuel. There's a spent fuel license to be able to manage the backend of a nuclear lifecycle. Fi- funny enough, there, there actually is, it is not a new, there is a manufacturing license that the Nuclear Regulatory Commission has. It is a pathway. Not very well used, but it is, uh, so there's no, there is no licensed path. That the Nuclear Regulatory Commission is making specifically for radiant. We are able to use all. Legacy licensing pathways to regulate our reactor.
Thank you.
I think what Commissioner Mel was getting at is that there's a lot of nuclear waste that's stored. Within Wyoming that's not listed, that's not identified, that people aren't aware of, and it's all over the place. Uh, and this is different grades, different levels, but there's a lot of nuclear waste that's, that's already produced either. Through our medical community or other things that's already being stored here. And I think, I assume that's where.
Medical, oil, gas, there's a lot of different, you know, it's used quite, quite, all sorts of places.
If, if I, you're correct there. And if I, if I may, I did a tour of a fabrication shop in the Casper area a couple of weeks ago and. Through their operations, they actually have a radiation safety officer for some of the applications that they have. So it, um, there are. A variety of licenses and the Nuclear Regulatory Commission does have, does already complete work in Wyoming, yes.
Any other questions?
Just one, uh, how long ago did this process start?
Radiant was founded in twenty nineteen.
For, to come to Wyoming.
Oh, um, we, so the citing process as a whole started last, uh, April twenty twenty-four. So about a year ago, I say Wyoming was on our initial list. We started spending a lot of time in Wyoming late summer of last year.
So when did you first contact any commissioners from, uh, this county about it?
Our first, our first trip to, I actually was just talking to someone about this last night. Our first trip to Nitro County. Was late August of last year. And that was with a handful of representatives, not county commissioners. So the. Conversation with county, county commissioners happened later that year, that later last year. And then I'd say we started. Even more conversations and some of the, uh, more formal outreach in January of this year.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear. I, I've never been able to, I haven't talked to you before. It's the first I've heard about.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coach?
So walk me through the Bar Nun site selection. What, what is so appealing about that?
Uh, so, uh, Commissioner, if I'm able to further specify, we're, we're just outside the. Uh, city, the limits of Bar Nun. So we're just north of West Winds, and so we're technically in Nitro County. Why, why that area? Um, to give folks that know that area more context too, we're looking at purchasing a hundred and thirty acres and, um, it basically hugs, there's. Um, there's a gravel pit up there and then I twenty-five, we basically hug between a half mile and a mile of that. Land between West Winds and going north in that, in that general area. Uh, we looked. In Wyoming specifically, we probably looked at. You know, four or five sites very seriously. Through this entire process, we looked at ten plus states and closer to a hundred sites, but. Um, it was a, I'd say it was a joint decision in, uh, Nitro County. What I mean by that is we had certain requirements on our end, environmental. Size, et cetera. And then we also wanted to be a good, good partner for the community. And so. We did work with organizations like Advanced Casper to understand, hey, where, where could we be a good fit? Cause again, we, we are, we are based out of Southern California. I'll raise my hand and say I've. I've learned a lot about Wyoming, but I am by no means an expert. And so we shared our requirements and we worked through a handful of folks, understand. Where could we be a fit? And there's fairly large projects that are happening, um, in Mills in Evansville as an example. And so. Uh, we were generally pointing north. And so we spent a lot of time looking at Bar Nun. And as we. Spent more and more time qualifying the site, and by qualifying the site, we've hired an environmental consultant, done what's called a critical issues assessment. Like we've. We, we feel really confident that this land will work for our needs. And then the final step. Um, in our scorecard workforce, we've talked a little bit about that, really important, and we feel like we're a good fit there. Environmental, we've checked that box. And the last step is community engagement. We, we've. We have interacted and we downselected sites in other states that have way more familiarity, familiarity with nuclear. So, uh. That's why we've been intentional with the land we want to purchase. We have a letter of intent. We haven't purchased it yet. And so at the town hall, a couple of weeks ago, we said. That was intentional so that we can spend the summer having conversations like this to help educate the community in what we want to do. Um, at, at the end of the day, Radiant will not be successful if we have enough, uh, public dissent on the project. And so. Uh, there is a world where we would have to go to a backup option. I do not want to do that. Um, and so we, I'm, I will be here. We have other folks on the team that will be here as, as much as necessary and probably more. To help folks understand, uh, what we're trying to accomplish and why we think we'll be a really good fit for this community.
Any other questions?
Did you say you're from Southern California?
I, I probably should not have said that. I apologize.
Whereabouts? Whereabouts?
I, I, I live in, uh, Fullerton, California, which is in Orange County, just south of Los Angeles.
Orange County is a good county.
It is. Uh, I, I am first on the list to move here.
It's a Republican county, so that's a good thing for you.
I, I live in a Republican county, uh, in, in Southern California, yes.
We appreciate that. Um, we appreciate you coming in today and giving us this information. And I. And I know that you have a lot of plans for additional, uh, town halls and different things. And. Uh, I appreciate that you being candid about this and.
Thanks for coming.
We appreciate you coming in. We really do. This is something that, uh, the community needs to be. Educated on so that they can make wise decisions on what they want to do and what they don't want to do. But, uh. But I do think that it's, uh. I think it's interesting that the United States is behind the eight ball and when France is ahead of us in anything, it bothers me. So. Uh, but yeah, I do appreciate you coming in today.
Uh, me too. And next time, bring a nuclear engineer with you.
Will do.
I don't know what to ask him, but I'll ask him something. I, he might be one that can teach me a lesson.
He can explain it to you, but he can't make you understand it.
No.
You will know which ones the nuclear engineer when I bring him.
I'm sure.
So, all right. Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
I can tell by their shoes.
We have a couple of minutes or. Don't see Danielle right now. She's the next on the list. So. Yeah, so.
So I'm glad you're all here. I know you'll have some questions. Always good to see Nitro County people sitting in those seats back there. I welcome them all, even if they didn't vote for me. There aren't very many who didn't.
We'll take a short break, just a short recess. So we're waiting on our HR. Person to get here. So thanks, everybody, for coming in. Oh, they're on, okay. Okay, sorry, thought I hit it. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back into order and uh, Danielle, and we'll discuss the planning.
Sure, thank you Commissioners. Um, so in your packet, you have a memo from me regarding a planning update. Um, I'll just quickly run through that. Um, the full-time planner position has remained vacant for fourteen months. We did um, extend one offer of employment, but that applicant did decline the position. Over the past fourteen months, the county has engaged with ECS Engineering um, to address the specialized requirements of the planning department. And then also Deputy County Attorney Jared Holbrook uh, assumed the responsibilities of the acting supervisor. The total cost of that for um, the year of April one to April one was sixty-six thousand four hundred seven dollars. Um, with the resignation of Deputy County Attorney coming up here in a couple of weeks, and we need to make a plan moving forward. Commissioner Coats did reach out to me and asked me to contact a recruiting company, which I did do. With that recruiting company, you can see their proposal to help address our recruitment needs. There's two different um, proposals there and the costs. Um, I did some research and I reached out to a couple of other recruiting companies as well, and this is an extremely reasonable cost. The other thing that I think the commission um, should consider is if we follow our policy request for bids. Um, it says any county office must request formal bids for expenditures of fifty thousand dollars or more. And we have expended that this year. So I think if we move forward, um, we need to follow that policy in that process and do an RFP, just a suggestion, so.
Danielle, how optimistic are you that we're going to get any qualified applicants?
Not extremely, so Prothman did say, um, the person that I did speak with, it was a gentleman, I can't remember his name, but he did giggle when I mentioned the position. And he said, well, you and every other county is trying to hire a planner right now. So um, he said they would be happy to work with us and try to help us out with our needs. Um, I looked, I did some other research and according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it's a nationwide shortage of urban and regional planning roles with counties. So um, they do expect those roles to pick back up um, in the next five to ten years. It's kind of the roller coaster effect. So right now there's an overabundance of nursing, they say. And then five to ten years, it'll die off again because people aren't going to nursing school because there's an overabundance right now. It's kind of that roller coaster effect situation, so.
So that, that being said, we're probably better off, at least in the short term, looking at an RFP and, and working on doing something so we can hire somebody to cover where, where we've been, so we aren't left hanging. That mean, is that your recommendation?
Well, I, I think that's one option. Um, the agreement that we have right now with ECS Engineering is um, it's basically day-to-day, month-to-month. It's an ongoing agreement. So it wasn't like, we'll give them a ninety-day notice or, that I, I don't believe so, I'd have to double check. Um, but other than that, it's, it's a day-to-day agreement. So we could do something to that effect, um, continue to outsource it while we're still trying to recruit. Um, because I do think eventually we'll find somebody, I would hope. Um, but you know, I, I can't speak for that department and how it's functioning and running. Um, it is, but with the day-to-day um, meetings that Jared and Shelby have with the public and with his absence, I think Shelby's gonna have to rely heavily on outsourcing some of those um, conversations.
So Lita, where, where do you think we need to move forward? If we're doing a month-to-month, do you, would, would we have to do an RFP or uh, or if we're doing long-term contract or?
I would agree with Ms. Crewcheck. Just so everyone gets a, I guess, a reasonable shake, so to speak, at the outsourcing.
So. Can we get that kinda taken care of? I mean, that's something that I know the commission needs to, as a whole, needs to support that. What, what are the feelings from the commission on that? Commissioner Mill?
Get it done.
Any other comments?
Danielle, what was the timeframe that the uh, Prothman's outreach covers?
You know, I did not see a timeframe in here. You know, they've got the fees and the expenses and um, the steps, but it does not have an actual timeframe.
Okay, well regardless of that, I think we do need to search for a planner, but we also need to get something in place as we continue to move on. I don't think this is a role that we need to continue to fill with an attorney, so.
We, we can't have a gap in service on this. We need to have that RFP out as soon as possible and accept those. It's vital.
I agree, so.
Uh, Chairman North, Commissioners, is that a process that you would like me to coordinate with legal? I mean, I have a um, a template for an RFP and I'll certainly work with legal on that. But would you like me to coordinate those RFPs and get you the information?
I think the sooner the better, that we can get that done. And even if we have to uh, look at something and, and ratify that at our next meeting, can move forward if with enough votes, um, or with enough votes here, we can actually move forward with doing that. So um, with that, I would entertain a motion to.
I'd like to see the RFP before we accept.
Well, I'm just saying I move forward with developing that. I'm not, I'm not saying confirm it, but yeah, well, I agree that we need to look at it and we need to see it before we.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't think we need a motion for that, but go ahead, yeah. Make a motion, start the RFP process for that.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call votes, okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the last thing, um, would you like me to move forward with Prothman recruiting with one of their options? The first option is sourcing and outreach only. Basically, they do the advertising for the position, um, that's fifty-five hundred dollars. The second option is sourcing and screening. So they do the advertising, they do all of the first option, and then they'll do screening of the applicants as well to make sure that they are qualified for our position and send us the applicants. That's eleven thousand five hundred. If we do not find in the agreement, it says if we do not find um, a candidate in the first go-around, they will repeat the process one additional time at no additional cost.
Well, I think it's gonna be our best opportunity to locate in somebody. Any other comments on that?
Just a minor comment. People come to work because they get a salary they think they can live with. And I don't, do you think we're offering that salary? I mean, how many, how many applications have we had over this, for this job in a year?
Well, that's in the memo, we had, that were qualified, um, we had three qualified candidates.
And why didn't any of them take the job?
Well, we only offered to one person.
Oh.
And we did offer him the position, it was a gentleman from back east, New Jersey, and he ended up staying in New Jersey.
Do you think it was because of the amount of money he was offered?
I don't believe so. I believe he stayed east because he wanted to be in that area.
You probably don't know what he made back there though, huh?
No.
What's, what's the rate we're offering on that job right now?
Um, we offered that gentleman ninety thousand dollars per year.
What amount should we offer to ensure getting somebody? Do you, you have an idea there?
Well, I don't, and um, other counties and uh, cities that I've spoke with in Wyoming have said that other planners have figured out that they're very marketable and they're going other places for more money than our attorney or department heads make. So ninety thousand dollars would keep us equitable within our pay scale, within our other employees. That would probably be one of our highest-paid employees that is not a department head. And we do have two employees that are supervisors over departments that do not make that salary. So that's why we were trying to keep within that range.
Well, I hate to go spend ten thousand bucks on some outfit to find people that we won't pay enough to get the job anyway.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill?
So I was thinking about this the other day. We've had people fill that, that position prior that were not degreed planners. Couple of them very successful, some of them that were degreed, not so. I don't know if we should be discounting some of those people that may apply or have that, that requirement that they have to be papered. Jason did a fine job in planning. He had some, you know, there were some things, but he managed that department just peachy. Christie, Chrissy, she didn't, she didn't come in as a paper planner.
No.
And while it took her a while to catch her feet, she's still catching her feet, we had somebody there. I think it behooves to actually consider, is that piece of paper that hangs on a wall worth a hundred-plus thousand or whatever? Or can we get somebody that's experienced, that has a level head, can read a piece of, a document, follow that document, work with the public and be able to fill that position and manage that department without paying a hundred thousand dollars or more? This is to the point where we're at. What's that piece of paper worth?
Mr. Chairman, I agree, Jim, in what you're saying. The, the thing that I do see hap- having happen though, is you get somebody in there, a young person that wants, Zeke wants to learn and then learns, and then learns that they can make a lot more money and they leave quickly.
And we're still in the same position we're at right now, but we've had somebody there.
But I'm not arguing with you about the idea. I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get somebody who will stay here for five or ten years? That's what I would like to see. If that's not possible, then it's not possible.
If they want to improve themselves while they're here, I'm all for it, whatever. But, but getting a manager in there to manage that department, to be able to, to work potentially with a, a subject matter expert that we could contract out if we, for the more technical uh, projects, that may not be a bad plan. It's something to consider. This, not having somebody over that department for a year or so, or how long has it been now?
Fourteen months.
Fourteen months. For over a year is absolutely ridiculous. We need to start thinking outside the box and come up with something else.
I, I agree with you. Um, I think that's something that we do need to look at, look at all applicants and, and there's a lot of people that are very capable that don't necessarily have that degree. Especially, you know, in our county where we really don't have things that are, that are being developed on a regular basis, it's not like other locations. So I do think that's something that we need to look at and look at all applicants that we, that we might have, so.
Chairman, we did have a local architect and a local engineer that applied and the commission decided to not um, move forward with the interview process because they were not qualified on paper. I can go back and look at those and bring those back to the commission for you to reconsider.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Actually.
Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it seems to me that uh, we do need to think outside the box. And I wonder about um, making modification to the um, job listing description so that maybe we don't have as a requirement quite all this stuff. Now, maybe, you know, that, that they be papered or whatever. Um, I don't know if we can tweak that. I don't feel that we can uh, put this out at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for, you know, a lot of different reasons. Um, so I think we're kind of stuck in this um, salary range. I think we can maybe add a little to it, but maybe not a ton. Are there things that you could do with the job description to maybe make it more attractive to people um, who might not have the paper, might be scared away, and then at least it's where their hat in the ring?
Commissioner Nicolason, yes, absolutely.
Right, I'd like to see us do that. And then with respect to the um, this, this outfit, uh, I'm not, oh wait, here it is, Prothman, Prothman. Um, it seems like we could do the sourcing and outreach, but I don't think we need them to do the screening. Those are just my thoughts.
So how much time would it save you if they did the outreach? And for that matter, would that be a cost savings for your department? If Prothman did that?
Uh, Commissioner Coats, yes. So they'll send out to over thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred different contacts that they have, okay, wait, right here. Direct mail announcements are eighteen hundred dollars right there. I receive announcements from them once a month for open positions for human resources directors. And they're very nice announcements that come out. Um, so they do a lot of um, targeted direct mailing recruitment type ads to people who they think would be qualified. Um, and then we would of course give those, um, give them what are qualification requirements.
Try the other one, yeah, it just, I don't know why it did that, but.
Yeah.
Try again. Well, yeah, we can, but nobody else will be able to.
Talk really loud.
Okay.
Yeah. Use your outside voice.
So as Commissioner um, Nicolason was saying, yes, we can loosen up those requirements to try to attract um, other candidates, as Commissioner Millen was saying as well.
So I'm generally in favor of that. I think we can lessen the requirements as Commissioner Millen and Commissioner Nicolason said. I think we could build in before they receive their certification while they're here. That is something we can absolutely do, something we should probably go, go down that road considering how hard it is. So I'd like to see that if we have time to do that.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
So I, I have a question.
Commissioner Mill.
Maybe a analogy. It's a, it's, it's, it's not a bad idea, but what I want to know is if you, for instance, if you had a garage that fixed car engines and you hired some young mechanic because you didn't have any mechanics, and he ruined three car engines, what that would cost you? So I don't know, I don't know what not having a planner in there costs this county per year. Do you have any idea?
I do not.
So, so there's a, a point where I would say, yeah, it's okay to, you know, have kindergarten class in there and let them work their way up. I think it's not a bad idea. But will it cost us more money than if we just paid somebody who knew how to do it? And I don't know if anybody has that answer. But I think it has to be thought about.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Yeah, I, I, I take exception to kindergarten class. I, I don't think we're lowering our standards that far. Um, I think we would be making reasonable adjustments to it so that it's still attracted a qualified pool of candidates. And specifically, they, they talk, this outfit talks about in strategic outreach methods, every recruitment strategy is customized because every client is unique. I think we need to get our five, fifty-five hundred dollars worth and make sure that they are promoting it in a way that makes Casper and.
get our five, fifty-five hundred dollars worth and make sure that they are promoting it in a way that makes Casper and Nitrona County um an attractive place to, to look into further. So, thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Mill.
They can use it. If, if we're not looking for somebody that has the right paper pedigree, that's fine. If we find a, a professional, young or whatever, I don't care. We find somebody that's professional that wants to improve themselves, we can use a Casey Sand that training, that ability to for, help them further themselves as a hook to bring them in. So I don't see that as a problem as far as costing the county. The county doesn't, it doesn't cost the county a thing. It's, it's, it's the developers, it's the people out there that's, this, that's, it's costing. And if a developer comes in and there's no planner, they're, they get to do either not the project or do what they want. Almost. So that's kind of a bad thing in my mind and potential future owners of that property or that project. It's, it's incumbent upon us to have that service and have that personnel there. So, and, and like I said, if the project is of that scope, we have the ability to reach out, contract out and get s- those subject matter experts onboard to help provide that expertise for that project itself. For the, the ma and pa that want to put up a house or subdivide or do a simple subdivision or whatever. After a bit, that almost becomes rote. So again encourages, we need to move forward. We need to find that professional out there that wants to improve themselves. Throw out that hook for training and see what catches.
Any other questions?
The only other thing, uh, Mr. Chairman, and this may be for executive session, we need to discuss um the absence of the acting supervisor and we need a supervisor named for the planning department.
I agree again.
You're just totally agreeable today, aren't you?
Well, just today, for a short period of time.
All right. Um. I think that is a discussion that we probably should have an exec um since it is directly related to personnel. So um, we can come back to that a little bit later on this afternoon.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thanks. We're a little ahead of schedule, but we go on to the Board of Parks Trustees Recreation System. Discussion for interviews, transition.
I guess I'll start. I'd like to see interviews maybe within the next next month, I'm, I'm in made at least, at least a round of interviews and then maybe as we, we interview and make selections and amongst ourselves, we can just, we can determine who wants to peel off first.
I don't have any, I don't have any problem with that. I think that, I think we can probably get, get some stuff um. Going fairly quickly. Um. Before the interviews go, we've got about, I think we have six people on there right now. Um. So that six people have submitted applications, so we could, we can definitely set that up and start moving forward with that. Um. Has anybody got any suggestions on date on that? Next week, I, it's not going to work for me at all, so um. It would have to be the week of the twenty eighth. No, of April. Everybody be available on the twenty eighth or the twenty ninth? Okay, it's twenty eighth.
I'd have to say a maybe.
Huh? Yeah, that's Monday. Okay, all right. We'll set them up on the twenty eighth. We'll get.
You're saying April twenty eighth?
April twenty eighth. Yeah. Okay. P M. Okay. Michelle, did you get? Did you get that?
Actually, I'm only on the page of the day. So I received a letter today.
The foundation board.
That's foundation.
Oh, that's question press. Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, sorry. So there's six of them. How long are you wanting to interview?
Thirty minutes. Yeah, we can do them all in one day. Yeah. One, then one o'clock, one o'clock. Yeah, we'll start at one o'clock. Yeah, that, that'll be easy. We can, we can start that at one o'clock and do those interviews. The twenty eighth. The next thing, right along with that, does it, any other discussion on that particular board? Okay. Um, the next thing, the Collective Health Trust, we've got three applicants for that currently. Would.
I've got a couple people that I'm talking to right now that are very interested in that. They um for a little more information on that, so we may have more for that.
Okay, so, so we want to hold off on, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, because like I said, next week I'm going to be gone Tuesday through the end of the week and so it's a, that kind of puts a kink in that, but uh. Okay. Well, then we can, we can see what our schedule looks like and we can send something out and send, but we'll do that. We'll give them till the end of next week and then we'll set something up uh with our current, if that'll work for everybody. And we could look at, depending on how many people we have. We need to interview, we'll go from there, so. Anybody have any issues with that? Okay. All right. Then we will move forward with that and we'll let you know, Michelle, on, on that, so. All right. Next thing. Legal update.
Thank you. Good afternoon again, gentlemen. I don't have too many. Just wanted to provide an update on the land swap. The short version is that we have contracted with an appraiser, although of course we're waiting for the engagement letter, but he is aware of our needs and what we're looking for. And the city has, there is continuing to work on a draft. I provided them with the last of the information we needed, which would have been the legal description of where our cell, cell tower is up there. So they have that now. I think on Friday I was able to provide that to them. So that's the update on that. And any questions on that? Okay. And sure, uh, sure. Yes. I think, well, it there's been several drafts, of course, by different people over the last year trying to work on this, but I will provide the most recent one. And then Appian Way, there is a hearing on that petition to vacate, just so you all know, on May twentieth. The viewer's report is complete and it's been accepted by the county and notices have been sent out to all interested parties. And then with respect to the RFP for the facilities assessment that has been published, posted and so forth. I know we did receive one question. I just don't recall what it was, but we did forward that to Garrett.
Okay.
And then last but not least, I would recommend that, or we in legal would recommend that the county should consider contracting out with an outside attorney, the Title twenty five hearings due to the soon to be staff shortage. I know that was uh done before and there's just a lot that go into them and if there's only one attorney left, that attorney would be tied up in court or processing court in court, you know, the first four hours of the day and would not be available for anything else. So that's our recommendation.
Because of the time constraint that we're looking at, I think we need to move on that sooner instead of later. I would like to make a motion that we have somebody make a motion that we, that we do move forward with that to work with an outside contractor. Um, work on that Title twenty five. And like they just said, we have done that in the past. That's what it used to be, so.
Well, just to clarify, it does get a little confusing. Legal did notify the other twenty-three counties and the other stakeholders, so to speak, that Nitrona County would no longer, it was a courtesy. I mean, they did pay, but it was essentially a courtesy. Would no longer be prosecuting Title twenty fives if a resident, say a Fremont County is detained there, but for whatever reason he or she needs to come here, say for services, we will not prosecute those at this point. For example, yesterday, six of our hearings were out of county and today I believe four out of five were out of county. So we have attempted to, let's take steps to minimize the damage or.
Yeah. So what was the response from the other counties?
Sure, I re- um, let's see. I had two counties give me a call and say thanks for letting them know and if we need any help due to circumstances, they'll be happy to help. The other county asked for names of individuals uh to either defend or to prosecute these cases. I provided the names I know of. I mean, there's not very many because not very many individuals in the state do this. However, any attorney should be able to learn, but, and received and thank you. And I, I received another email asking if we could provide a form to them. And we're more than happy to cooperate, obviously, with those counties. We all work together. It's a small group of individuals that do Title twenty fives, but we'll just do the best we can. No complaints, at least to me.
I have a comment. I had a call from an attorney that doesn't want us to not take cases from other counties. He says we make money on them. Uh, he's been defending them for years. And I asked him to come and uh give a, talk to us about it. He thought he needed more than five minutes, so I see he sent me a, he sent me a uh text saying that he'll send a letter. Um, he thinks in the past, Nitrona, this has been a moneymaker for Nitrona. I don't know how much, but anytime it's a moneymaker for Nitrona, I think we have to think about it, but I do understand, Lita, what you're saying as well. Um, yes, that he says there's been other county attorneys that have had I guess made money and I don't know if they were a county attorney when they made money, after they left as county attorney. So, uh, and he thinks it's, it's a moneymaker and that we don't charge enough on top of it. So I, it's too bad he couldn't come and talk to us about it, but uh, he's pretty knowledgeable with it. He's been doing it for years. And I think you know him, Mr. Nicolason. He's currently defends these cases frequently. Says he puts about two and a half hours a day into the project, so something I'm, I think we have to look at, but I hear what Lita's saying about.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like the, Lita and uh County Clerk have some numbers.
Okay.
Commissioner Laird, uh, several responses to that. With all due respect to that attorney, he bills differently. He bills more for out of county when he defends out of county patients versus in county or our, Nitrona County. And we, we don't bill that way at the county attorney's office. With respect to the time, he also, we do everything and he gets the paperwork. We prepare everything in my office. And with respect to whether it makes money or not, I, um, I spoke with Mr. Martinez and Ms. Good earlier and this fiscal year, we received one thou- or a hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven, ninety-two from billing. The way billing works, it's not quite that simple. The defense attorney bills us, then we bill those other counties and it's quite the process, but.
Do, do we actually make money that on the deal?
I don't know if that's make money or not.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I wouldn't be able to say whether we make money or not. Um, that's just the revenue stream that we've received thus far.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Um, our HR person is still here. Danielle, um, did we do an RFP for these services um in the past and we could dust that off?
That I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
My understanding, and Danielle's obviously been here longer, is that the court appoints our defense attorney. And the court has always appointed the individual we're speaking of. And right now I do not believe that we have a contract with him. I know it's a little weird, the court appoints, but we pay.
Well, but my question is to get this outside assistance.
Oh, for the prosecution.
For our assistance, um, for an outside um party, whether it's by RFP or by a letter agreement. When we used to do it with outside counsel, do we still have that as a go-by form to hopefully expedite implementing it this time?
I've never looked for one.
Commissioner Nicolason, I, I am not aware of one. So um when I came on, we did have a contracted attorney that did these part-time. And um, we decided that with all of the um B O R hearings, um, we had another attorney in the office tied up with those. I can say that it was around sixty thousand dollars a year is what we were paying that outside attorney to do the Title twenty fives. Um, and then we added on around twenty-five thousand dollars more per year to bring them back in-house and to hire our own attorney and bring those back in-house as well. So if that gives you any indication, we were paying around sixty thousand dollars per year. I do know that.
Yeah.
But I do not know of any RFP.
I know that was our justification between bringing a third attorney back in was that we were already spending the majority, if not all, that.
If I remember right, he was retiring and we were going to have to actually increase that to get somebody else.
Yeah.
Contractually, so that's why we have.
Yeah.
Counsel, would you recommend, um, if we do hire an outside attorney, would you recommend that we uh reinstitute this um um, I guess, agreement or policy to do outside county Title twenty fives? Or just leave that alone and not do it anymore? I mean, it'd save us money. I think it'd save us money if we didn't have outside counsel do that, but I, I don't know what your recommendation would be.
I think at this point, it's reasonable that the counties start doing their own outside of this county and then we can revisit that. I don't know who would be awarded or who would apply to be the outside prosecution, how much knowledge they have, how I'm not sure how that would work. And then who does the billing? Does that prosecutor do the billing? Who, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it.
So it doesn't sound like to me, Mr. Chairman, that we have a clear picture of what we even want to ask for, so maybe um, maybe you and Danielle, since again, she's still here. Um, and, and come up with some ideas and then make some informal contacts and see what might be attractive uh and tell us what the next steps might be after that.
I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What do we pay? What have we paid the attorney to do that? That, where we hired somebody, do you know?
Yeah, Commissioner Laird, we were paying sixty thousand dollars per year.
That was just a flat fee, no matter how many cases they did?
You know, I couldn't, I, I never saw the billing. You know, I couldn't, I, I never saw the billing. I just knew how much we had paid out because we had to consider the salary when we brought it back in-house. Um, along with that, just some quick math in my head, um, with that third attorney that we brought back in-house, if you consider $100,000 per year for that attorney, plus their loaded costs, um, I don't know if the clerk has, um, a percentage for a loaded cost. But if you add on 25% onto $100,000, that's how much we're paying for our third attorney. So if you hire this out and you go back to two attorneys from three attorneys, you'll have that, that cost, that salary cost.
Holding right along with that, too.
Another question.
Wait a minute.
Well, I had another question that I could follow up.
Just wait a minute. Right along with that, though, we need to, we need to do something soon because Lita is going to be the long ranger here very shortly, and she's going to need that help. So we're going to need to, we're going to need to do something, even if it's short-term. We're going to need to make sure that she has the help that she needs, even if it's a couple of months while we're looking, and then we can reevaluate things. That's all I'm, that, that's right now what I'm looking at, is take it through the end of the fiscal year where we can actually have a chance and an opportunity to get our, our other attorney positions filled while we're doing this. That's what I would like for us to move forward with and, and get done so that Lita can concentrate on the other items that she's going to have to be working on while we're doing a search for, I mean, it, even if we hire somebody, we all know that it took at least a month and a half for one of them to come on, and it took three months for the other one to come on last time. So that's something we need to make sure that Lita has the resources that she needs so she can get the other things done and not have to worry about the Title 25. That's, that's where I'm going with this. And that's, that's what I would like to see us move forward on, at least on a short-term basis, and we can reevaluate it if we need to. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
My question is, I'm trying to figure out how much this will cost us first. So how much does, do we pay the, this attorney, this unknown attorney I've been talking about? Do we pay him?
Yes, Commissioner Laird. I, I believe the latest contract, the last contract we actually had with him, and, and mind you, again, the court appoints, we don't get to pick, is $80,000 a year.
I thought he got paid differently.
He gets paid, and I don't know how or why he does the billing he does, so I, I can't answer to that. He charges in-county cases, residents, different than out-of-county. So if someone in Sweetwater County is detained, but they need our services here, he charges more to represent them, that patient than a local individual here who needs our.
You know what the charge is?
I, I, I cannot say for sure.
We have that somewhere.
Yes, I don't have it readily handy.
Because I thought it was by the case, actually, that he got paid by the case.
He does bill by the case, that is true. He'll send us an invoice. How that interplays with the $80,000, I've never seen a contract. I, I, I'm not sure.
Maybe we could get more information, because I'd like to know, uh, if they're being paid by the hour. So if you hire somebody to do these and they're spending, say, three hours, 15 hours a week, then do they get paid by the hour or just a flat rate fee and then what that might end up coming out to? So, so I do agree with the chairman. We need to get somebody figured out, but I'd like to know what we're going to pay him first.
Right. And I think one of the biggest struggles, to be honest, because an attorney should be able to learn whatever area of law, is Title 25s are every day at 8:30 till whenever they get done. So when you talk about an attorney, say, at whatever firm, if their schedule's not clear from 8:30 to, say, noon or 11:30 every day, and that, I think, and that cannot be changed. But that will be one of the biggest hurdles is an attorney that has their schedule clear for two months from eight to 11:30.
You mentioned that issue to me as well about the 8:30 thing, and then I thought he said something about spending two and a half hours a day on it.
Right. So my understanding, and I don't do his job, we, we do all the paperwork. We get it ready. We file the cases. He gets copies. And then he visits with the patients, his clients. And I believe the last time he, I spoke to him, of course, at 8:30, maybe he starts at 7:30, eight, depending if they're at the medical center or cure at Wyoming Behavioral Institute. And that's how he does it. I don't know that it has to be done that way. And then we go to court, and then we do all the paperwork and go from there. And we start over the next morning. But I'm just letting you know, the biggest hurdle will be the time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So what's the board's opinion on doing something moving forward and having Lita work on an MOU with an outside group to get this accomplished, at least while we're looking for an additional attorney, uh, or two?
Is it done?
Okay. Okay. Got Jim over here shaking his head. Can't hear that on the record.
Get it done. Uh, and I agree with, I agree with your, what you've done proactively, eliminating the outside county cases to eliminate or minimize some of your workload. That's smart thinking. I'm, I'm glad you're being proactive on trying to manage this mess that we're in and up with, with those two leaving. So I do appreciate that a lot. But yeah, let's get you the help that we can as soon as possible.
Okay, okay. So yeah, let's go ahead and move forward with that. Okay.
And that's all I have unless you all have any questions.
I don't. There, there were a few items, personnel items that we needed to discuss in executive session. So do I have a motion that we move into executive session for personnel matters?
I move that we move to executive session for personnel matters.
We have a second. Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, we're now in executive session.
We're out of executive session, no action was taken. And at this point in time we will go into recess until five thirty when we have the rigor meeting start again.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started. I don't know what we're going to do. So, yeah. I'm trying to get down the tension. So, all right, we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting this afternoon. Start it with approval of the consent agenda. We have a motion.
Some move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So moved. All right, we'll move on to public comment at this point in time.
I'm not afraid.
Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Board of County Commissioners for allowing me to speak here tonight. My name is Bill Alaman. I'm House Representative for 58, which is Midwest, Ederton, Barnum, Vista West and around the airport. Over the last year, I have felt like a mushroom, kept in the dark and fed crap over this proposed manufacturing and hazardous nuclear dump to be located in my district of 58. I started hearing about this proposal in the House chambers in late February. Several legislators, county commissioners, city officials and private citizens had already been working on it for months and months. There was little to no transparency to me or my people of Wyoming and House District 58. Why? We are putting the cart ahead of the horse in even talking about $25 million, hard-earned tax dollars given, given granted to a company whose plans to store nuclear waste in Wyoming. Today, the state of Wyoming does not allow any storage of nuclear waste unless it was spent on the site of disposal. Our Wyoming Constitution in section 16, Article 16, Section 6 states loan of credit donations prohibited works of international improve, internal improvement, I'm sorry. Neither the state nor any county, city, township, town, school, district or any other political subdivision shall loan or give its credit or make donations to any and any individual association or corporation except for the necessary support of the poor. There were two bills introduced in the legislation this past session. One was HB 16. That bill died before it even got to the, uh, it died before it got to the House even. The other was SF 186. It also died in the House Minerals Committee with a vote of five to three. Folks, these were very bad bills. Some points to this bill was number one, nuclear waste will be stored temporarily. In the world of nuclear waste, the definition of temporary is 40 years. However, the legislature can extend this time. Number two, the provisions of the industrial development, and this has been read from uh, number D of this bill that did fail. The provisions of the Industrial Development Information and City Act of 3512101 through 3512119 shall apply only to the extent that those provisions do not, do not interfere with contradictions or duplicity in any requirements of the United States Nuclear Regulatory System. So folks, what, what would be done here? Barnum, Daytona County and the state of Wyoming will be giving up its sovereignty. The NRC will have the final say in everything. We will not have a say. The, the last place I'm going to read you from this bill is any spent, and this is under F, any spent nuclear fuel, fuel in storage at an installation shall remain the property of the advanced nuclear reactor manufacturer until this spent fuel is transferred to a permanent storage. In the United States today, there is no permanent storage. So what would happen if a company that did this went bankrupt? I don't know what would happen. Would the state of Wyoming all of a sudden own all this nuclear fuel? And how much would it cost us to clean it up? Also HB 11, which I, it did pass and I did vote for it. It exempts all manufacturing machinery and services from paying sales and service taxes. So where is this big cash cow I keep hearing about? It's not around here. I've been receiving many calls from Barnum and probably 90% have been against. Not the manufacturing, but the storage of nuclear waste in their backyards. Several days ago, I had a call from two gentlemen within a half hour apart. Both gentlemen told me if this happens, they will be selling their house and moving away from Barnum. And I've heard that over and over. What will this do to our home prices? It sure not can make them go up or keep them stable even. It's going to make them go down. I am commissioning a poll by text messages for all of my House District 58 on this issue. If you receive one of these polls, please answer it. I also plan, and this is a lot with Radiant's help, them and I have been working together on this. It's, it's not my deal alone. I want the people of Barnum to be educated as to what is going to happen to them. Uh, I plan starting in May to have a monthly town hall. I will advertise them the best I can.
Representative Alaman, can you kind of wrap it up?
Yeah, I, I'm so in conclusion.
Okay, I appreciate that.
There are many things I liked about this project. However, I think we need to slow down, think about it and do it right if we're going to do it at all. Pass good laws and do things right for the protection of our citizens in our town. I hope this body will listen to the people, whether they are for or against this project. These are the people who has put their trust in you and me. Thank you. Any questions, please?
Mr. Nicolaisen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Representative, for being here. Um, I think you were at that town hall in Barnum. I think it was well attended about a month ago. Um, I, my understanding from the Wyoming Business Council, Josh Darnell, their CEO or president, um, was that the $25 million would not go to this company. It would go to infrastructure development that would be utilized by this company and the surrounding area. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding, but it is designed for this company. If this company was not coming in, we would not be asking the business council for $25 million, which in my opinion, our constitution says we should not be doing.
My understanding also from that meeting was that if there is a bankruptcy, that company goes under, that that fuel is, that spent fuel, the nuclear fuel, um, is owned by not the county and not the state, but by the federal government. Is that your understanding as well?
That's what they tell me. But the federal government's told me a lot on BLM lands. They told me a lot on Art Rock Springs RMP. I've heard a lot and I don't know that I trust everything I hear from the federal government. They, they could walk away from this and say, hey, it's your problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Coates.
Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you.
So you said there were things you liked about the project and you said that there are good laws. So what's the solution? In your short to near term view?
I, I really liked the idea and I'm not in a majority of the people of Barnum, which I do not live there, but I really liked the manufacturing. And if it could be guaranteed to me that all, the only nuclear waste that was ever stored on that site came out of these plants. I could probably go for that, but the Nuclear Regulatory Commission could bring, once we sign over these bills, the Nuclear Regulatory Commission could bring anything in from New York or Nevada, anywhere. And we could turn Barnum into a waste dump. That is what I don't like. There is so many things I do like about it, but I am concerned and I will let you know. Right now I am neutral on this issue. And after I get my poll taken, if the people of Barnum, which my calls are about 90% against, if my poll bears that out, I will be very much against it. I hope, I would really rather be for it and work this out, but I don't know that that can happen at this point. Thank you, gentlemen.
Senator? Name and address, please.
Um, my name is Bob I. I'm here as a private citizen and as a legislator, I guess, because have to confront these issues a lot down in Cheyenne. 3838 Garden Creek Road. Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission here, the board. Just a couple of things here. The good representative mentioned, I think it's, everybody needs to step back and take a deep breath on this because there's a lot of unknowns. I don't know. I've been studying this a lot, trying to understand the nuclear business and um, there's, there's a lot of questions. The first one I want to mention too, that was brought up, uh, good Commissioner Nicolaisen. As everybody probably knows, I'm not a big fan of, of uh, spreading out taxpayer money for private businesses. It's, it's the wrong thing to do. It distorts the market. You know, it's an economic development shell game. The business council launders the money through, through the state, through the municipalities. And it's, it's all to benefit the, the private sector and we need to get out of that. My job at the legislators, legislature is to make the rules, to make the rules of the game. And then we enforce those rules and just be referee. We shouldn't be players. Uh, that's my ideological philosophy there. So, um, you know, as far as being Santa Claus here and, and you know, there's, it shouldn't even matter winners and losers. You know, you hear that a lot, but we shouldn't even be in that game. We've got a lot of losers. There's probably some winners in there, but that's not the role of government. It's not the proper role of government. The second thing is, is the primacy issue. You know, everything I've read, I've got this article from the National Conference of State Legislators, talking about overview of nuclear regulation for state legislators. So I can understand what, what I'm dealing with down there when we see uh, these, these policies come in front of us. And that's what I don't like. We always defer to, you know, Washington DC, 2,000 miles away. And uh, nobody really knows what's going on on the ground close to home here. So, you know, preemption by the federal government is somewhere we need to stay as far away from it as we can. This article here from, from uh, the National Conference of State Legislators says, put simply, the National Regulatory Commission has sole authority to regulate the nuclear, radiological, operational and site-specific aspects of nuclear facilities. Meanwhile, states can implement policies to regulate the electric companies to develop and operate nuclear power facilities. If, if we lose, you know, all primacy on this, it, it's a bad road to go down. I mean, we're a sovereign state. We need to act like one. And I understand nuclear is a, is a hard, hard thing for any specialized people in our state, but uh, there's a lot of unanswered questions on, you know, these spent fuel rods. The federal government hasn't even figured it out yet. They don't, there is no place to put that waste. They haven't decided on it. They've got a, they've got a billion dollar budget. The NRC has a billion dollar budget with 3,000 employees. And we still don't have a place to put our nuclear waste. So it's all on the operators on their site. So that's all I want to say is just step back, take a deep breath. I think we, there's a lot of unanswered questions on, on this situation here in Barnum. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coates.
Senator I, so on the primacy issue, so Wyoming doesn't have primacy over its water quality stuff. And so EPA is the primacy for drinking water quality, wastewater. Is that something that you think the state wants to take on as far as, you know, nuclear regulatory? That the state should have its own wing for that if we aren't willing to do that for our water?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Yeah, I, I think that the EPA, I mean, there's, you can really get into the weeds on this, but where's the enumerated power in the constitution to even have an EPA? I mean, we're overlapped with our state DEQ. Uh, just like the Department of Education, we're a lot of conversation on that as well. I think uh, the closer we get it to local authority, the better off we are on everything.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rosemary Saban, Machona County resident. I have some questions that I've been asked by people around the community to ask. How long, and I, I realize this was under, this was answered earlier, but I, I think it bears answering again. How long has this commission been aware of radiant nuclear proposal?
I've been aware of it since about November. That was when, that was when I was first invited to a meeting with them, with the employees there. That was the first time that I knew about it.
Thank you. Anybody before that? What's been done for public transparency? Aside from Mr. Alaman putting a flyer out there to announce that there was going to be a town hall in Barnum from this commission, our representatives. It was said there were public meetings and again, was that properly printed in a public notice? Is this Board of Commissioners giving recommendation to apply for $25 million for radiant with Advanced Casper, the Joint Powers Board? Are you giving your recommendation? Now or at any point?
We haven't seen anything at this point in time.
Okay. What is the process going forward? You heard from them today, so what can we expect next?
For the most part, I think they're trying to be as, as transparent as possible. Uh, I think from my understanding from Representative Alaman, that they're going to try to, they're trying to work with uh, more town hall meetings, uh, get more information out there. And that's the biggest thing is just spending time. It's going to take time to get that information out there to everybody. And everybody can obviously come to every meeting. Obviously, we don't have this room packed all the time, which is nice. I mean, we did for a while, but it's kind of nice not to. But as far as that goes, as far as the transparency goes, you know, if there's meetings that are open to the public and they are publicized, you can't force people to be there. You can provide people with the opportunity, but if they choose not to be there, then they're going to get the information that's, that's broadcast around. So I think it's, I think that the public information is something that's going to have to be brought up. I think that's something that's going to have to be presented all the way across the board. And that's the only way that you're going to get total support for things is by having people actually understand. Meeting that we had this afternoon was just a start. That was just something so that they could present something to the commission. So we could have an opportunity to answer, ask questions and. so we could have an opportunity to answer, ask questions, and satisfy what our thoughts were. That needs to be done for the entire public, and I'm a firm believer in that. I'm a firm believer in transparency all the way across the board, because if people don't feel like they're getting the truth, then they're gonna, they're gonna build their own opinion accordingly. But if they are, then they can build that opinion on factual information. And I just, I just hope that people will be receptive to whatever information is, is presented to them, and then develop their opinion that way at the end. Look at it at the end and don't look at it right up front. Don't, don't use fear. Don't use some of the other stuff. Representative Alaman made a, made a comment a while ago that if he had that guarantee, well, I think that's something that, working with our representatives there in Washington DC, we could get that guarantee. And I think that's something that, you get those kind of rules passed.
We can be open to discussion on that. We haven't had guarantees for a lot of things, like wind and solar coming into the state, but we're, I'll be open to the discussion, sir. Do you have any idea what that extra 21, that extra 20 million would be for?
No.
Is there plans to build a bypass?
That has been in discussion for a long time, and I'm not sure exactly where that is currently.
Okay. Again, these are questions that I've been asked to ask, so I appreciate the transparency. And earlier it was said that, is it your understanding that, earlier it was says that the application would be for a grant rather than a loan? Is that, is that what you understand through the Wyoming Business Council?
That's, that's what I heard.
Okay. And one little point of clarity, that earlier it was said that France is ahead of us. In the, if you're not aware, I posted the legislative material, all of the discussions, and it was said that France is heavily subsidized, so.
And I'm not talking about the subsidies.
Well, that's why they've got this up and going in France, because they are subsidized. We don't want to be subsidizing business, okay? Any questions? Thank you kindly.
Good evening. Name, name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tony Locke. I'm a Casper resident. And I just wanted, I just wanted clarification. I know you guys have kind of answered this, but it kind of hasn't popped out clearly to me, and I wanted to make sure I understood this process, the process of this request for, of the Wyoming Business Council. And I just wanted clarity on that topic, because I know it's come up a few times, and we've kind of hit little bits and pieces. So, if, I wanted to understand a little bit better, you know, who's making the request? And timeline-wise, it sounds like you haven't, it hasn't been brought to your attention. But my understanding that is in the public process, and I'm just, again, I'm just asking based on maybe my own naivety of the process. Will there be public comment, as it, my understanding is, Advanced Casper is going to bring that forward? I may be wrong with that, so I'll, I'll throw that out there. But I just wanted clarity, will there be public comment for their meetings? Is that going to be public? Or is it just public when it comes before you guys in your work session and here? I just wanted to understand the process, because I do know there are concerns out there. People are asking the questions. You've heard that enough tonight. I don't want to belabor that. But if you maybe could explain the process a little bit, just so people understand, at what point do they, can they, can they listen to the sum of this? Besides the fact that I know Radiant is having medians, meetings, which is great, fantastic. People are learning from that. But I think this 25 million request of the Wyoming Business Council is a topic of its own, and I think public exposure of that, you know, public comment is critical. And I just want to make sure we understand that process, so at the appropriate times, we can make sure people have their opportunity to have their word heard. So, more of this is just, I'm just asking about the process for clarification more than anything. I stand for questions, but if explaining the process would be helpful. Thank you.
I personally can't answer that question right now, because I don't have enough information.
Thank you. If, if that's something that the commission could do, could provide maybe a, some clarity on that, I'm sure it's something that'll shake out as this thing comes out. But it would just be good to make sure that people are adequately notified in advance to make sure they can, they can do that. That's, that's just one of the biggest issues. Let's just make sure it's transparent, the, the meetings that Radiant's having, along with other things. But I think that's another aspect of this. We want to make very clear to people. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a blessed day.
Anyone else?
My name's Brian Kleins. I live in Barnum, 1730 Catrel. I have a couple of issues with this. I'm trying to keep an open mind with it. I'm kind of for the production side of this, but I'm leaning against the nuclear waste part of it. But my biggest two issues lie in the transparency, because as far as a Barnum residence, we're fit, we feel this is going in our backyard, and we feel like we're being left out of it, like we have no say-so in it whatsoever. And I don't think that's right to the residents of Barnum. My other issue with this is, a few years ago, I had meetings with the city of Casper, and with Advanced Casper, I had a idea to bring a shooting range to Casper. And as we all know, there's a certain person that ran with this. Well, when I met with the city, everybody was on board with it, as long as I could find private funding for it. There was no money available for private business. And now we have a private business that all of a sudden, Advanced Casper wants to get a grant for, that they don't have to pay back. So, apparently, at some point in time, between the time I had my, my meetings with them in present day, this has all changed now. We, they can now support private business?
I don't know what, if anything, has changed as far as what they can and can't support. I think a lot of that depends on who is, you know, what the program is that they're looking at. But they're, they, my understanding is that they evaluate each individual request.
They, I even had the city, the city of Casper offered me property right there across from the event center to build this one. And I was in the middle of talking to investors, and this project was going to bring 200 to 300 jobs to one business. And I was looking at millions of dollars in revenue coming into the state through sales tax, property taxes, income taxes, and stuff like that.
I would be happy to talk with you offline about this.
I'd be more than happy to sit down with you, sir.
About some different things, because I've got some ideas that might be able to help you out a little bit.
But I'm with, I'm, I'm with the other representatives in this room. It's a private business. We don't need to fund it. We're strapped for cash right now. How many businesses have closed down in Wyoming since COVID? How many small businesses have we lost right here in Casper? That there was no, no money available to keep them afloat. But now we want to bring in some large, major company that really doesn't have any information if they can produce this product or not. I think there's other avenues that we could look at outside of nuclear waste and nuclear production that would benefit Wyoming and Casper, Barnum, the county, the state, in, in, in better ways than what this, what this company. Because right now I don't see any incentive to, to bring them in here.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Chair and County Commissioners. My name is Tina Hobel Heinrich, 251 Indian Paintbrush. And I'm, I'm sitting, listening to the comments today, and just want to point out a couple of, I, I think really obvious things. Recently, the city of Casper got a SLIB grant or loan to develop the infrastructure utilities, power lights at the Halo, so we can continue to develop the sports ranch. Evansville recently got SLIB support so that we could build utilities, sidewalks, roads, power, water to the Mesa Development. That same support has gone to Mills, so that Austin could expand. I don't know that anyone knows the particulars of some in-the-future requests that Radiant might make of the Business Council, but it would stand to logic that in that case, it would be for utility development, which Radiant will never own. The city of Barnum will always own that, and once that infrastructure is in, it can't be taken away. For the last 18 months, I have had the pleasure of working with the Wyoming SME chapter to bring back a really important conference. It's called the Global Uranium Symposium. That conference was held here in Casper until 2017, and hasn't been here since. And I have been with them every step of the way, and I'm so excited to tell you that we are seeing registrations from all over the world. We are seeing sponsorships. The conference is going to be huge, and I think it just brings up the point that uranium is the future of Wyoming, and I would hate for us to miss the opportunity to capitalize on something as cutting-edge and world-changing as a micro-nuclear reactor. There are a lot of things between now and production that have to be answered. No one argues that. I just would encourage you to keep an open mind until those things are resolved. Questions?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tasma Powers. I'm a resident of Casper and Natrona County. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to hear what Radiant and Advanced Casper had to say this afternoon. I think, being a longtime resident of Wyoming, it's important that Wyomingites understand what it is we are partnering with. As a member of this community for a long time, I have appreciated the recent investment that the Wyoming Business Council has made in the various communities and municipalities in our county. That has not always been the case. As the business hub of Wyoming, which I firmly believe that we are, we have a lot of entrepreneurs, we have a lot of business people, we have a lot of independent spirit. And I don't think that we are short-sighted enough to say that just because there may be a grant in the future that would continue to be owned by the government, that we should not embrace an opportunity to learn more about Radiant and what it would bring to this community. So, I appreciate your open minds. I appreciate the discussion. I think we should give Radiant the chance to explain their project, that we should give Radiant the chance to help us understand that this isn't the nuclear production that we all heard about as a Cold War child. I also went under my desk at Dallas, but I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Laird. I think we, they deserve an open mind, and, and we deserve some answers at the same time, and we should get those. But as to this grant, I think Ms. Hobel Heinrich had a great point, and we have benefited from the investment that the Business Council has made through the SLIB, and that money is going to go somewhere. So, from my perspective, it would be nice if it continues to come to Natrona County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne True, and I am also a resident of Casper in Natrona County. I just came up to talk a little bit about uranium mining. As someone who's been in the oil and gas and uranium industries for the last 20-plus years, it's just a reminder that we've been mining uranium in Wyoming since the 1950s, just east of here, certainly south of here. And it's been mined, processed, and shipped for 70-plus years. So, I guess I just want to make the comment that we already deal with these sorts of issues already. I, others have spoken about the concerns about this lib, or Business Council concerns. I won't touch on those. But I, I do want to mention that Wyoming, and all of us in this room definitely know this, it can be a difficult place to do business, certainly even more difficult to attract businesses that are large employers of folks. I know that I want to keep my kids here. I want your kids here. And so I think we need to look to those industries that want to come here and are interested in, in working and doing business in our great state. And I'd stand for any questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anyone else?
AC Wita, 4009 East 12th Street. I'm a Casper resident, Natrona County resident. Just want to echo some things that my colleagues have just said here. I think this is a tremendous opportunity for Natrona County and for Casper. I think we can't overlook the economic development possibilities that this company could bring, and I appreciate that you're all listening to what Radiant has to say and asking prudent questions and making some tough decisions about whether they should come here or not. But I fully support that Radiant should come here, and we should follow its development as it progresses through developing its product at High Neil in Idaho. And I'm not truly worried about the nuclear waste. It's a, these are micro reactors, and they're, they're not very big, and what the nuclear waste is going to be is very small. And we heard today how that would be contained. And I think that it would be a real boon for Natrona County and for Casper, and is, that sub money is going to go somewhere, as Ms. Powers just said. And I'd like to see it come here to Natrona County. I also, we recently moved our company to Casper. We're thrilled to be here. But it's hard to move to Casper. I grew up here, and it's a great place to live. I want my kids, who are adults, to move here, and they're looking at it. I want yours to come here, back here, or stay here. And I just think that these kinds of jobs provide that kind of opportunity, especially in Natrona County. So, thank you very much for considering Radiant and the possibilities that it brings to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Philip Braille, resident of Casper here. I'm just learning about this. Tasma's introducing this to me. I just, I'm grateful for the opportunity, opportunity to learn. I would just ask, if this is done the right way, it sounds like it could be, I guess I'm asking for transparency. If this is done the right way, it could be, sounds like a really good thing for Casper. So, I think if it's handled by you guys and everyone else involved, all, everything is disclosed, it's, happens the right way. We always got to weigh the risk versus the rewards, and it sounds like the, the rewards, in my opinion, could be greater than the risks. And so, that's every decision we make in life. So, continue to keep an open mind in the financials that could come to Casper and the good things that could happen here. I appreciate you guys looking into that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Glenda Thomas, and my dad was Glenn Catchpole, and he worked in the uranium mining industry. I think we moved to Casper in 1978. And then my husband and I moved back here to help start up uranium mine outside, kind of between here and Gillette. And so lots of experience in the industry of uranium and nuclear power. And I think this is very important for Casper, and it's a safe industry, lots of- Lots of research and technology has gone into what they're proposing, and I support it.
Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners. Matt Wilson, representative of Radiant, resident of Southern California, but interested in being a future resident of the Casper area and even Bar Nun specifically. So I just wanted to add a handful of points of clarification from some of the questions I heard today. So one, we have not bought the land yet. We do have a letter of intent. That's intentional. We want to have these types of conversations. I think a lot of good discussions happened tonight. We want to keep that going. And so some folks maybe wanted us to start this conversation earlier. It's tough timing. We want to make sure we have a real opportunity for this community. And that's why we've done so much work to date. And that's why we're here so much now, is we have all intention of coming here, assisting this community, shows that they want to learn, understand, and be a part of this as well. And then when it comes to the regulatory pass, I am speaking for all of Radiant when our preference would be to work directly with Wyoming DEQ. We would like to start there. If we want to manufacture these reactors, we have to get Nuclear Reactory Commission licenses. Now, it's not an OR. We have to get the Nuclear Reactory Commission licenses. And then we also need to get the approvals through the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, Air Quality, as an example, et cetera, et cetera. So we need both. It is not Wyoming losing their sovereignty. We need local agencies to sign up to say this makes sense as well. We'll hand over all of our documentation to them, too. And then regarding the grant, Radiant's intentions come here regardless of the grant. I've heard questions of like, where does Radiant fit in, et cetera, et cetera. Utilities pulled to the site that directly benefits Radiant, I'll call that out. Regardless of the outcome of this grant, Radiant's intention is to site here. So it is outside of Radiant's overall plans. If the grant doesn't come to fruition, Radiant will pull the utilities, be very focused on all of our needs. If the Wyoming Business Council grant does come to fruition, what else does that do? It's not just focused on Radiant. Radiant is a catalyst for the grant, I will call it out from my understanding. But it opens up other opportunities. We'll oversize electrical utilities, oversize the other areas so that it can bring more industry to that area. For the public commentary section, I can talk a little bit about that from my understanding. The Advanced Casper is looking to submit that application in the next month. Again, it is not a Radiant application. This is Advanced Casper submitting this application. And then from there...
You're back. You're back.
It's a board vote. There we go. We're back. Right when you stand up. And eventually goes to a slipboard vote. That is my understanding. Again, Radiant's interested in this grant, so it will be a part of the process. But it is something that is driven by Advanced Casper, Wyoming Business Council, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other comments? One once, one twice. Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the public comment tonight. I think this process, and more in particular, the community and the public, need to be driven by facts and not fear. And I think that, you know, we can, whether it's episodes of The Simpsons, or Chernobyl, or all these things that people get worked up about and think, oh, God, could that happen here? That's not what Radiant's proposal is. And I think that if you pay attention to the facts and what they're presenting, and I think they did an excellent job at that Bar Nun Town Hall. I know a lot of people in this room made that meeting. I don't know that all of you did. I did. And I was super impressed with their team. And from what little I can understand, the science, but what is clear is that there's, you know, this is different, these microreactors and radiation risk and things like that. I would think I would have a hard time approving something that would risk the importation of spent fuel from other sites. I think that's a really legitimate point. I think that we might have a part in making a decision based upon what we are seeing in an application. And I think this is a generational project. And I think that it can be generational in a really positive way for Natrona County and Bar Nun in particular. That's what that Business Ready Grant and the Wyoming Business Council does. It doesn't take money and provide it to any individual company or person. What it does is it enhances the community to be ready for economic development. And I think that if we're not prepared to be open-minded to economic development, then we're going to kind of shrivel away into nothingness. And it's not going to be a solid community for you or for our kids. So I think we need to be open-minded about this, and I appreciate the comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Coaks.
So recently, we, myself and Commissioner Nicolason, had some really positive interviews with the opioid task force. Everyone we interviewed had really great input. And we ended up making a really good selection. And I think there'll be some really good progress made on the opioid front in the community in the near future. Briefly on the Business Council, I'll give it, there's some credence to the argument of picking winners and losers. I think that's a truthful discussion that we can probably have. In my experience, the Business Council's been geared toward economic diversification and the retainage of jobs or the creation of jobs. There has been some really good benefit to the city of Mills, specifically the city of Mills. Worked with them through Project Smile, yet to come to full fruition. But it could do really good things for the community. The community benefits quite a bit, and there's a lot of jobs that are preserved because of that. And with Radiant, I kind of like our, we heard from our legislators here, I'm fairly neutral on this right now. There's a lot to learn about this. I just think that we have to be careful with Radiant, nuclear, or any of these new things to not immediately focus on the adverse effects of these things when we engage in many adverse actions on our own. So let's just be careful and look at these things and all the problems as they are and not maybe conflate them beyond what they actually are. So.
Commissioner Matt.
Oh, Radiant, 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 Radiant. What are we going to do with you? So I don't have a whole lot extra that Commissioner Nicolason or Coats have already said about it. We do absolutely must keep an open mind about this. Must learn facts and not be educated by a green goo from Simpsons. When we talk about this, we need to understand the science behind it. It will take some education. There's a lot of support out there that isn't being spoken of. And you can see, when there's articles from Oil City and whatnot, there is a lot of support. So we need to be cautious. We need to make sure we're mindful of what they're doing, of what the state wants to do, and move forward. The economic development grant, if it doesn't go through, eh. They said they were going to go without, they're going to pull the lines on the utilities that they specifically need. Does that mean that will assist any further development in that area? Absolutely not, because they're going to be using what they have pulled. Somebody else is going to have to pull their own power, their own water, their own everything. There will be no economic development. Maybe stymie in some future growth. That is what it is. But if we were able to support it, as we did Mesa, as we have other projects, it does bring in opportunities for employment, for taxes, for whatever. I think that needs to be truly considered. And I understand the philosophy behind it. I understand the feeling it kind of gives you. But I also understand, and I can see past that, to the benefit that it would possibly produce for this county. As far as primacy, we don't have it now with the NRC with radiological material other than ton norm and norm. They regulate all that stuff, your wire lines with oil field, they regulate the mining, they regulate the yellow cake that's sitting out in fields northeast of here, they regulate the drilling and getting it out of the ground, they regulate the source that's in somebody's lock, vault, somewhere else that they test tools with, they regulate all that. Can the state of Wyoming do it? No. The state doesn't have the technical expertise, nor do they have the capacity. We've seen those budget cuts, and we cannot afford those personnel to do that job. We're going to have to rely on the feds to do that regulatory. It's a decision y'all made. So it is what it is. I'm keeping an open mind about it. I'm not giving them carte blanche. If I see where it's not beneficial for this county, there's no way I'm going to vote for it. If I see a benefit for this county, we'll see. The questions being asked, I understand it. The question, when did you know about it? I knew about it the same time Dave did, in the same time, same meeting. There's no dark bugaboos hiding in the corner trying to create a dark ball. This has been fairly transparent. They had a lot of work to do. Any business opportunity that wants to hold on to property opportunity is going to not talk about it in order to keep the price down or even available. It's just how business is. So... That's kind of where I'm at, is I'm waiting to see. It's not, I'm not for, I'm not against. But what I'm saying is we need to listen, open-minded, take those comments, those thoughts that are out there that are either against or for, for fear-mongering or not, however they're coming out, we need to keep an open mind and take them with a grain of salt and listen to the science and the benefits. I think maybe a lot of you weren't here when Casper was a uranium boom town. Maybe you've forgotten how much uranium and nuclear meant to this town. It hasn't always been oil, hasn't always been cattle. It's been all of them. And it's a shame that we're burying our heads in sand and trying to avoid, for whatever reason, to improve ourselves and our community. I'm not saying that this is going to do it, but maybe. Maybe.
Commissioner Laird.
Well, my crystal ball went off, so I can't read it. But I'm going to read something. It says, "Radiant Industries, a startup developing portable nuclear reactors that will replace diesel generators, announced today that it has raised $40 million in a Series B funding round led by Anderson Horowitz, bringing his total capital raise to $54 million with an additional $2.3 million in government awards. Radiant's micro-reactor is the first-of-its-kind clean-energy solution that integrates safe, proven nuclear technologies with cutting-edge engineering techniques from aerospace and software industries." It's a pretty lengthy article, but it'd be worthy reading. Here's the way I see my duties. I was elected by the people of Natrona County. And I believe that I treat the people in Natrona County fairly, whoever they are, whatever their name is, how much ever money they've got. So the first thing I look at is what they want to do, is it all legal? Is it purely legal? Is it safe for our citizens? It concerns me, somebody made a comment, it concerns me if you, any kind of an activity that you might build, will it destroy the value of people's homes? To me, that's kind of a gut-wrencher, to see people suffer if they happen to be living in a place that they thought would be their home for the rest of their life or whatever, and turn out that some business moves in there and half their values cut off their house. I don't know that that would happen here, but it could go up. Maybe it will go up, and then that'd be a good deal. That's what I mean by I don't have a crystal ball. But I think that, you know, I know most of the McMurries and have known them, and I think they're good people. And they've done a lot for this state, actually. And so I always look at that. The Trues as well. I went to high school with a lot of them, because I was born and raised here the same way they were. And I want the best for Natrona County. But I don't want my people to get hurt. I don't want them to live in fear of anything. I remember when my uncle, Ralph Schaus, was going around with this, what do they call it, a uranium detector? He had a little box, he'd run around, a Geiger counter, and he brought it down in Nevada. Went in our backyard and it was clicking off. And I said, Uncle Ralph, do you think we have uranium here? And of course, they'd been blowing up atomic bombs over by Vegas. So 25, 30 years later, they think that that's what that was. Well, I don't think Radiant's issue is like that. But when you get under your desk and your uncle comes with a Geiger counter, and he actually had, I think at one time, the most uranium mines in Wyoming. I don't know what ended up happening. He lived to be 93. And so I, you know, I can only say I'm like these other guys. I have an open mind to this. I want the best for Wyoming. I don't like giving government money to private enterprise, and I see they've got millions, they're doing pretty well there. If in fact they're bringing in a company here that manufactures, I tune them for that. Now, what I would really like to know, and I hope that it comes out from some nuclear engineer or somebody who really knows what the guards say on this kind of thing, if this could hurt our people, or it could devalue their properties, I have to know that. And then I have to know what our people say to me. I know we have government, I know the government gives away money, I know all of that. Got a president now. I don't know what they would say about this if him and Elon Musk came to Wyoming and started digging around. Maybe they'd like the idea, maybe they wouldn't. I don't know enough about it. And I'm certainly not a seer. I can't see the future. But I know all the people in here. Think they're all honest, decent people. That's what I'm seeing when I look out here. That's what I'm seeing when I look out here. So I need more information, like the representative said. I have no opinion right now. I just don't want my people hurt. And I want them taken care of if they are hurt. Because sometimes things happen. And I don't want, I don't want, I don't want them to, you know, I keep going back to the city with their fire out here at the garbage dump. Burned all these houses down. And we have a law that says, well, you don't have to pay very much if you're a municipality. Millions of dollars of damage in the city. You only had to pay $500,000. I don't think that was right at all. You guys in the legislature, you ought to change that. If you burn down a guy's million-dollar house, you ought to pay him a million dollars if you're a government agency. So, and that's the lawyer in me. I think if you hurt people, you got to pay, you got to pay the bill. And so I like to see new, fresh energy coming in here. And guys from Southern California are welcome here, as far as I'm concerned, especially if they're from Orange County. Some other areas, I'd be a little concerned. But we need more information, or at least I need more information. I got to have more information. And I'm hoping we get it and when the time comes, I'm going to do the best I can, ladies and gentlemen. That's all I can tell you right now. I'm going to pay attention to everything, not mad at anybody. I don't have anything to gain myself. And have a completely open mind, period. The end. Thank you.
I'm going to change pace a little bit. Start out, we have one of our clerks employees that's been with us for 48 years and she'll be leaving next week. To have somebody that's committed that much time is just amazing, you know, and I do appreciate that. I appreciate our employees because our employees are our resource. And without them, we couldn't get anything done. And we have another one in the back, back there, that's, this is going to be her last night of protecting us as commissioners. One of her sheriff deputies. And so this will be her last meeting. And I want to reach out and tell her thank you for the services she's given to this county too. I'm happy to take any phone calls, pretty much for those of you that have called me. I do answer my phone calls. And if I miss them, I will call you back. But if you've got any questions about any of this stuff, I don't know, we don't have all the answers. None of us do. But that's part of being educated and that's part of learning as we go about different things. And there's more information that we get pushed upon us than most people ever realize. And trying to digest that and move forward and make the best decisions is something that we have to do. And I truly believe that that's the reason why I ran, is to make this county the best county we possibly can. And that's what my sole interest is. And with that...